Meeting on time, the mayor's center techs, he'll be running a few minutes late, so we can save and get the staff to do their presentations. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like to turn over the reading to Mr. Earl Coffey, our city manager.
Thank you all, welcome today. We have added a couple of things, so we started out being a budget meeting, but we've added a couple of things that we think it's good to talk about. And then one thing that has popped up this week that we are trying to respond to, we did a little bit yesterday, and we have a little bit more to do today. That is the federal funding request that came out of Washington to us to ask us for project and ideas. And so we'll go over that, too. Starting on that, we received a request, go back, we, you know, we do these one-page summaries on various things that the city's been working on. And we've given those to, for example, Congressman Guthrie's office. And we keep a binder of those ideas that we have, or things that we're working on, on file. And so what the request came to us was, is that there's going to be some increased federal, what, it's not really earmarks, but through various federal programs, there's going to be additional capital investment dollars available for local communities. And so we have worked with Congressman Guthrie's office to get this list of projects out of the pile that we had sent before. We had asked them, we had updated some of them, we'd sent them all to them again. And their staff pilfered through all of our projects and recommended us doing a formal application for these six. We had five, the county at the bottom had a terrific idea with Judge Hunt. When we were reviewing this list with Judge Hunt, which we have done, the, for Recovery Housing Project also. So what these look like, one is the relocation, the airport entrance road, entrance access road. The airport has, is very restricted in their, what is called on-air property, which is inside their secure fence. The access road limits where they can put hangers, limits the additional hangers they can install. With the unfortunate incident of the tornado, they can rethink access to the east of, if you look at the image on the left, you can see how the hangers used to picture frame the runways. And it made it very challenging to develop additional hangers on that side of the runway, on the north side of the main runway, and on the east side of the shorter runway, right? And so now that the tornado has damaged the property, what they hope to do is open up a taxiway to the east of those existing hangers that are, use my little pointer. These hangers here remain, these two, and so, or this one, this one, this one, and this one were destroyed. And so what they've talked about is having hangers in this space for additional on-air use. And so what we would like to do is seek funding to move the road from here over to this area. And that hopefully open up both sides of that property for activities. So the east side would be for off-air use, potential commercial property. This side would be majority on-air secure fence. They would move, move the, that security fence now is on this side of the road. And they would like to move it over into some area over here and really rethink how that works. So getting an opportunity for some federal dollars, we talked about, again, we talked about all these with the county. There's a letter of support necessary for all these projects. We've asked the county judge for one on all these projects. We're asking that you all authorize the city, the mayor, or the mayor pro tem to sign also a letter of support. So that's what we're asking today, but we will describe, finish describing the projects. I just wanted to get that out of the way. So we have talked about this with the airport, we've talked about this with the county judge. On North Stewart's Lane, Norfolk Southern has a track of land that's significant that we've been trying to facilitate development on through the EDP for years. The biggest obstacle there is right-of-way access. Right now, their access is off the bypass here. When we looked at the concept for the east-west connector, this alignment that is, you can see is what was the recommended alignment. We sent that to Norfolk Southern, and they love the idea and are more than willing to allow their property to be accessed and crossed. And that, if we can get this roadway constructed, at least on the west end, that opens up this track of land for a building up to, I think, I can't remember what that square footage says that far away. I think it's like 400,000 square feet, maybe. The, also, you would end up with some remnant parcels over here that are in the neighborhood of, you know, two to five acres, something like that. So those are, it turns out to be a good economic investment. It opens up a small area for rail access industrial property. The next project, of course, we're still holding the fiber, we talked about that with the county judge. This is, we actually are altering the avenue. We're working on this with a separate pot of money, so we'll continue to do that. The Jenny Rogers Community Center concept, renovating the facility. We are asking for money to renovate and modernize the facility to make the childcare possibilities greater. Then, of course, the Megget project for the sanitary sewer, this being Danville. The trunk line that serves the industrial area, which is really all of this area that I'm trying to circle. The sewer line Phase Two that we're seeking through this submittal is funds for this portion of the line down in this area. It's upsizing, increasing the capacity. Recall, you had some easements on the agenda Monday night. This is a grant application or a request for funds for that. And then also then, the county, the judge has came up with a location, what he thinks can be a great spot to partner with a shepherd's house for a 27 to 30-bed facility, not as a pure halfway house, but akin to that, on county property. So he's contemplating that, they're coming up with, you know, additional information. Meanwhile, we would like to, the commission to send a letter of support for that request as well. So that's the six projects, and we wanted to know if you had any questions. If not, we would love permission to sign a letter of support for those six projects.
Chair would entertain a motion to grant permission.
A move for approval of signing the letters of support for the projects noted.
Sure, second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions from the commission?
I just appreciate the city manager for being proactive and prepared when these opportunities come up so quickly, so thank you.
Anyone else? If not, call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries, thank you. Coffey?
Would like to say Josh and Marshall does, and Ashley do a significant amount of the work. It's, you know, a give.
I find that really hard to believe.
Total, total, total credit to those two, I just want to make sure that that's understood.
Good teamwork.
Yeah, I don't, I don't always say that, but just those guys carry a lot of weight on tasks like this as they come up.
Okay, the next item is the fire station grand opening outline discussion, Mr. Coffey and chief, I guess.
Okay, so the chiefs here, and we've been working through what the grand opening will look like. And there's a couple of elements that we want to confirm with you guys that help steer what staff plans and how we, what we are intentional about. The first is the outline, which is basically, we want to open the station, open our doors about 10:30 on the grand opening morning. Right now, we're shooting for the 12th, Doug and I will shore that up this week and try to predict a specific day. What's important for us when we're picking the day first is that it's done, right? That we don't have the Memorial Plaza not finished, for example. We want to get all of it done and then open it up to the public and invite folks at that time. So we're, we want to take another minute to verify that the 12th of August will be okay, and then we will shore that up for all parties involved, okay? The, opening it up for, at 10:30 for the public that morning, we would envision the fire truck in front of the station, one of the big bay doors accessible from the street. At 11:00 a.m., we would like an organized ceremony to start. We'll introduce the mayor, and then allow the mayor to make opening remarks and introduce those in attendance. Now, we had emailed a preliminary invitee list, which would include state officials, national officials. We are going to send an invite out to the governor's office. We would hope that either the lieutenant governor or the governor may show up. If that's the case, then you would want to acknowledge them if they're able to make it. After brief introduction, 11:10, we would like the chief to do a slideshow of the history of the fire department, talk about the current project in detail, and major historical milestones with both this project and also with the growth of the fire department. You know, they have, they have, what, five trucks that are, that's on our list yesterday. You know, they're a big operation, and we want to allow them a chance to communicate to the public at the grand opening, really what they do, and really shine for a few minutes, and how that's changed throughout history, right? We will, we do want to hand out for the building like we did with the water plant. We do want a program that talks about the building, which is really a take-home document, something folks would carry away from the ceremony. After the chief gives a brief presentation, about 11:30, the mayor would have additional remarks. And then we would invite all the delegates, which is a matter of courtesy, a matter of practice. If an elected official attends, then you offer the floor to them for a few minutes for those that want to add something to it, especially, you would invite the county judge if he's in attendance. You would invite any state official or national official, if they're in attendance, you offer the floor to them. We would certainly do that at that time. Then after those remarks, for those that want to address the crowd, at about 11:40, we'll have a brief ribbon-cutting ceremony. We would have the ribbon, we envisioned the ribbon being between two doors, we'll open those doors. We will have Commissioner Cottle read something his mother read after 9/11, which was, we're calling it her mother's prayer for right now, without a better description, his mother's prayer, that she had that day. We'll have him read that. It is actually memorialized today in Whisker Park on a bronze plaque. What we'd like to do is continue to think about ways to redeploy that plaque from Whisker Park to our Memorial Plaza, which we actually think that's a more fitting environment. We talked a little bit about that with Commissioner Cottle. And we, we're interested if we can identify locations where that can really be highlighted better than it is at Whisker Park. Then we'll have the ribbon cutting. After that, we will continue and offer refreshments. And then we'll have 15 minutes scheduled tours available to those that want a guided tour. Other than that, we will treat it like City Hall was done, where the building is open to the public and staff is in the building to answer questions as you walk through the building. If you see a firefighter, you may ask what something is. And so we would like to have some firefighters at different locations in the building to answer questions. But other than that, we would meet at an appointed location and allow folks to tour, a guided tour of the facility to help communicate how it's intended to function. And then make the building open to the public through the afternoon on that same day, into the, close the business at the minimum. We would anticipate, in the same way the water plant was, folks will want tours of it after, well after that. And we will make that, we will make an effort to make the building available and provide that opportunity. I know we've gotten many, many classes at the water plant. We consistently do that, where folks still come and want to tour. I know the fire department does that now. I think this building will make the fire station, make the fire department one of the school stops, more than it is now. It will be a point of emphasis. When City Hall was done, they started coming into this building more. But I really think that they're going to, that's going to be a world civics class destination, in my opinion, so. Saying that, you've got a couple of questions. General, the level of the event, without trying to describe that farther, you've got a low-key event, or you could do a moderately fancy event, set like that. We, you know, we feel like kind of a moderate level is appropriate for first responders. We don't want to, it doesn't necessarily, in our minds, unless you all direct us, otherwise, it's not a gala. But we do want it to be appropriate for the investment in the community. We want to acknowledge the significance of the structure, the fact that it is something that happens once every 50 years for this community, and that it is a generational project. We want to acknowledge those things, but we want to make sure that we do something commensurate with what you're all's expectations are, right? And so then, we, you could do a sit-down meal, or we could serve refreshments. Right now, we are, staff is leaning towards the refreshment side and not a sit-down meal. We would like to know if that's appropriate. And also, as we respond, is it a formal event, or is it business casual during the day, during the week? You know, you want to invite your business folks downtown to, and it being a Friday, business casual anyway, we feel like that's the level of event that you're really looking at, based on August. It's going to be hot, it's going to be outside partly. And then all your downtown businesses will be functioning that day, right? So if we're going to get attendance, we would, we would expect it to be business casual. So that's how we view the event, and we would like to know what you're all's feedback is and what you're all's direction is on the event.
I'd almost bet you'd get just about all of Tolliver School's students to come on that Friday, because they're in walking distance, and they've been talking about it and talking about it. So I, I'd like to think about the fact that we have tours and it's not a sit-down event, that it's a flow-through type event, because fire stations are different from water treatment plants. You're going to have all kinds of people interested in this thing, yeah.
And I like the casual part of it, too.
Well, we want to be classy but still inviting for the general public. We want people to bring their families and kids, and we want the community to come and participate, so. I don't, I don't think a sit-down meal would be very inviting for them, so, the refreshments, so that people can kind of mingle. Are we going to have tables, or just chairs set up, or both?
Not very many tables, but we'll have chairs, is what we're focusing on right now. Is having seated seating area during the speech or during the presentation particularly. What we're looking at right now is trying to have a slideshow. So during the chief's speech, what we're anticipating is an actual slideshow of photographs and things to communicate outwardly a positive history for the fire department, which it has. And so we, we want to acknowledge that and give the fire department as a team a chance to stand out.
You probably could, well, not probably, you could loop that with technology, and it could just continuously play throughout the course of the day as people walk through that area.
That's correct, we have some common, yes, we have some common screens that are in different places in the building. We would like that same slideshow, or a hybrid of that to be on rotation as folks walk around the building, yeah.
It's just difficult to balance the refreshments when there aren't any tables at all.
Well, we'll have some.
Maybe just a few, even if they're the stand-up tables.
There'll be like refreshment tables.
Yeah.
And there will be, you know, sit-down tables.
Right, right, just where they can.
Before people come in, minutes of, um, church.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that seem fitting to you, chief? I mean, it does to me, but I, I'm not.
Absolutely, I think it's, it's, we want some really nice community, this is a community event. I mean, fantastic, persistent, and our staff as well, we're excited about it. It's a big project, because what's going on right now, or is getting, we're going to get into it. It's a large scale, and also we have to make emergency arrangements on top of this.
Hopefully not. Got to be prepared. Well, that'll be, that's the neat thing about having refreshments, I call it hors d'oeuvres, finger foods, whatever, is that they can continue all day long. If you have a sit-down meal, once a sit-down meal's over with, folks who show up after that, you know, you really don't have much food, so.
And that day will be operating out of the old system fire station as far as operationally, that way we can free up everything.
If it's, there's a big if on that one, too, though, right? No, that sounds good to me, yeah, you got a plan, yeah, yeah.
Are there any traditions that we need to make sure we address? Okay.
That the fire department. It's the fire department's show, your day, right? So we don't, you're not going to leave out any traditions about.
We're also looking to get a bit of, yeah, I spoke with the architect, that's something the city will have to purchase, that's something that's in contracts. It is, you can do a project, like, for the building.
And let me see, you approve everybody's name, get the name.
Yeah, make sure we get all the names out, yeah, Lord.
This sounds good, though, it's going to be an exciting time to me.
I'm excited.
Yeah, we want to do quality, quality refreshments, we, you know, we want to say that. We want something good and something not, not just, you know, unboxed cookies. You know, we want to do a good job with, you know, we want a good, good job with our refreshments and that kind of thing. We acknowledge that, that's something we're focusing on, so, but it sounds. So, but it sounds like that we generally have consensus on, from the commission, on the level of the event and that we're headed in the right direction. We'll get invitations out, we'll get, we'll get RSVPs from the federal and state folks, and we'll go, we'll go from there, yeah.
And I like the part about the, the area fire chiefs coming in, too. I think that'd be real neat to have a bunch.
Yeah, and just invite all of them, the.
Have you dressed up?
So, say it like this, too, just to confirm. The station should be open, people will meander through.
Yes.
Less than an actual, once you cut the ribbon, which is, should be a very short ceremony, people will want to just mingle.
Yes.
It will not be a situation where people are expecting, you know, this, and I'm asking, I'm thinking out loud, I'm confirming, I'm asking you all's confirmation of my thought, right? But it shouldn't be, we just do not envision it being something where it's everybody huddled around a table. We envision it being very casual, folks seeing what they want to see, folks. It extended hours of being accessible, similar to what City Hall did. Remember, we did City Hall, but we restricted it to, I wanted to say, two or three hours, where staff was in our departments, and we were, we were waiting there, and that citizens would walk through, and we would introduce ourselves, and they would, when they got tired, they would leave. But they had full access to the building, full access to behind all the locked doors, so that they could see really what the building was made of. And we would, we would like that same opportunity at the fire station, so that folks know that there is a tornado shelter in the building for the firefighters in the event. We do have a natural disaster. Hopefully, they can get out and respond. Hopefully, they've, they've been safe through that, as well as our citizens, and, but they can get out and react and begin helping folks, right? So, I don't know. Hopefully, that makes sense.
And after I take my initial slide down the pole, you can lock the poles off, right?
We're gonna lock the poles off, yeah. We gotta get a bigger airbag, remember, note that.
Be careful. Sounds neat. Okay, other comments or questions about the fire station grand opening?
I will say, if very many people, dignitaries want to speak, you might want to give more than ten minutes for that.
Yeah, we would, yeah. It's.
I don't want to run behind.
They would, at ten o'clock, they're cut off, that's it. Ten minutes, that's it.
Be like a funeral, get one person to speak for the whole group.
Well, you know, ideally, you would get some, you know, the governor, you know, the governor shows up, he may want to talk for a few minutes. There's totally reasonable, and certainly we would adapt to that. Yes, correct, yeah.
Okay, let's move on then. The third item, last item, is about budget discussion, and a lot of things up on the budget discussion, but.
So the budget discussion, we have, we met once on it and started talking about our ideas, and what we tried to do is float a history of the things that we've done. But really, today is what I'd like to do, is just prompt you all's discussion again. We get a lot of direction when you all talk, and that's what we are, we would encourage you to do. And we will try, as we go through things, as you see things, we'll try to be quiet and listen, right? The first thing that we're talking about is Economic Development Organization update. We want to make sure we communicate that outwardly. The EDA has, has been having active discussions about its expectations, or how it should fit into our broader economic development structure within the community. They actually, we went so far as to formalize three or four slides of that. Recall, we've done everything from going on a little trip with some of the EDP folks to contact other cities, and, you know, we've done a little bit of background work on what that looks like. And one of the first things that we realize is, is the most important things that fits into your community. There's not a catch-all. So you have to identify the economic development pillars in our community, and then provide a structure so that all those pillars are held, are holding that structure up, right? And it's not one pillar holding everything up. We like a comprehensive collaborative approach to economic development, so that communication is thorough throughout the system. That is what would be recommended for Danville. And so the EDP and the EDA and the other groups should be talking about, how do we restructure with that in mind? That collaborative effort, communicates, broad communication in mind. We have, on the slide on the right, we'll talk about for a second, the slide on the right is what the EDA, the Economic Development Authority, having seven members to sit down and talk through, and has made its official recommendation outwardly, okay? So we'll talk about that for just a second. First thing we did there is look at the existing structure of the EDP and look at the EDA as a board, and how do those two, what should they look like with the following foundation? It's, the priority of community goals is trust amongst the various entities that are participating, staff. We need to make sure we have the correct staff in the correct positions to support economic development, and then a plan of action. We believe that we need, as a community, four to five specific things that we are working on as a community, and that should be the direction that our emphasis should be on. So for example, for the city, and we have Marshall focusing on not just administration, but when you see what his goals are, we want to administer our utility in a modern way. We want to focus on the five capital projects he's working on, so every day, he thinks about those four or five things. There's a moment of emphasis. And so for me, the downtown master plan, I know we don't talk about it every day, but every day, there's something I think about on the downtown master plan, and I try to push that thing at least every day, right? So in the same way that I described that, your economic development team should have the community's plan of action, those four or five key things that are targeted, and focus on that with intention and collaboration. It takes everyone to lift, and we, the public, private sector, we have a lot of private participation from the hospital, to the center, to banks, to institutions, as well as the city and county, right? So we want to make, make sure that we maintain good collaboration. Then the priorities of focus are a little broader than a plan of action. We believe that we need to do a better job with business retention and expansion, BRE. That should be a priority of your economic development staff. Workforce development, we have to, that's an all-hands-on-deck situation, from your schools, to BCTC, to our industries, to all of us, to both improve the training of our workforce, but also, we need more employees in our region. We need more employees in Danville. We have, we do have an aging workforce, and that is not just a problem for Danville, that's a problem for Kentucky. And so we have to figure out a way to address that problem as a community, just like all the other communities in Kentucky that are struggling with it. And then the next thing is business attraction. So we got retention, expansion, workforce development, business attraction, which is new industry, new business, and then communication and collaboration. Partnerships require effort and communication. And so we have to do that system-wide in all of our organizations, and make sure that we are in touch with our businesses. And so, for example, one of the things that we've talked about is adding this person on city staff, which is, we've called community liaison. We've got a draft job description, we're gonna bring that back up. Can you go catch the judge? He's out there real quick. Thank you. He's got his letters. We're gonna get the letters for those projects we talked about. So, we, you know, we want to be in touch with our businesses here in the community. We want to have a relationship with, with all the people that participate in our community. And we believe better outcomes come from that. So then, what we'd like to do then from there is, how do we provide a structure that incorporates the mission of the EDA, the broader mission of the EDP, into one system, so that all those things are done? And so the EDA took a stab at that with the following couple of slides. This is the existing structure of the EDP, and some of the things that, that we have heard over the years related to, well, the EDP is, it's cumbersome, it's hard to, it's hard to administer staff, for example. And when you look at the makeup of the board, I would suggest that that's very evident just by the makeup of the board. There are seventeen members, there's no core group that influences, you know, each group is very small proportion to seventeen, and so it's very difficult to achieve leadership on a board with that size, with that, that much diversity, because everyone tends to defer to the others on the board. That's just the nature of organizational behavior in a situation like that at times. And so how do we make that better? One of the recommendations that we had as we, thank you, Ashley, when we went out to other communities, is that the Economic Development Board needs to be a small nimble board capable of taking action when necessary. And this board seems cumbersome, and so that statement, it was, was the beginning point for the EDA's recommendation, which is to reform the EDP into a smaller board of seven vote, seven voting members. The, we, the recommendation from the EDA was to have the county with two seats, county judge and a magistrate, the city with a mayor and a commissioner. Then we would recommend the EDA chair have a seat, the Bull County Industrial Foundation have a seat, and then a seat also preserved for this advisory council. The advisory council are all the other agencies in your community, such as your private entities that are engaging in economic development, your, your hospital, your center, think BCTC, think your school systems, think, any, anyone that is willing to invest money in your system, they should, they should be, the ability to participate on your advisory council, right? Yes, sir.
I like the, how that's laid out, because to me, it addresses one of the things that we kept hearing over and over again with the old EDP, or the current EDP, or however you want to say it, is that the majority of the people will be elected up here. Two magistrates, two people from the city, and, you know, we heard that for a long time, that there wasn't enough public oversight via the elected officials.
When you look at, so, so when you go to the other communities, the administrative side, which is your annual employee cost, it tends to be sixty, forty, private sector. But when you look at your overall investment in economic development, when you talk about land in the future, moving forward, right? Not, not what we've always done. We readily acknowledge that there's been significant private investment here. But when you look at it moving forward, you're really looking at about sixty percent public investment and about forty percent private. And so then this board kind of respects that, because you do have a percentage of private, you know, represented, representation, and then a percentage, a proportion percentage of the public dollars represented, if that makes sense. That was unintentional, that's something I actually thought of last weekend, that that's probably a fair distribution of representation, the more we've thought about it. It gives the Industrial Foundation a prominent role, which they still have, a significant amount of assets, a significant amount of property that they need to be directly engaged. This provides them an opportunity to be directly engaged, and it incorporates your EDA chair into this directly, which you want that to be a prominent figure. And then the advisory council. So what the advisory council will do, this, the proposal or the recommendation from the EDA, and we won't go through everything on the, on the, every little detail on the screen, there's a couple subtle things that are, that are with this, that I think are significant. The advisory council would meet quarterly with this board. This board then meets monthly. And so then, the advisory council vote comes out of the advisory council annually. One person represents them, they nominate from that pool of participants. The recommendation to provide a new face is that, or the, the EDA request, requested that the BCIF, the first person come from, a utility sector, that was, you know, that was just their recommendation, their thought towards it. And the biggest nuance here is that they recommended that the EDA be the holder of the employees at least for the first three to five years, and allow that to, to. It would acknowledge the perception that the employees have been, the capacity of this broader board to manage the employees, you know, over, over time, has been questioned. And so that concept acknowledges that and tries to provide an alternative to managing those employees. Now, that, that's how, I don't know how else to describe that, but, so then, those employees would be indirect employees of this corporate board, but you can do that, you know, in different ways. And so we'll see how the conversation plays out with, with that. I know that the EDP may feel differently. This is, keep in mind, a recommendation from your EDA. So then, your EDA would be the direct, which this is your, your EDA board currently formed. This magistrate would be a different magistrate than this one. And the reason for that, and this city commissioner would be on this board, whereas the, the city manager is identified on, on this board. And so the reason, one of the reasons for that is so that you don't want these, you don't want to make a quorum of your EDA or your EDA represented on this board. You want those to be two separate boards, right? So that you can, you can have a better interaction between the Industrial Foundation's private dollars and the EDA's public dollars, right? Hope that makes sense. So this is, again, your EDA concept. Then the advisory council, here's an example of your advisory council and what each one of your other representatives would be. The Industrial Foundation would have land acquisition, or land available, they would exist on their own, and private landowners would exist on their own. You, you can only fairly represent private landowners if you've acquired an option on their property. It's very difficult to recruit an industry to a site. Now, if an industry comes in and wants a site, then that is, that is on the market, then certainly we can connect the dots and help facilitate that with those private individuals, too. But the advisory council exists quarterly for information to receive and provide influence, but they don't have any daily administrative responsibility or authority. And I think that's, that's an important change. So right now, all the EDP board that consists of all these entities is responsible for administration. That's not the case moving forward.
So you said the advisory only meets quarterly?
Quarterly, yeah. That's the recommendation from the EDA. So now, the EDP published yesterday, the executive committee, a document that is their first blush. So when we go back to this slide, this question is what is being asked. The EDA has made its recommendation, which are on these slides that we just showed you. The EDP is evaluating both these slides, which has been given to them this first part of this week, and also what they believe their founding documents require of them. This is a preliminary, what they call an organizational framework memo, and it is, number one, they reiterated, the purpose of the EDP is to prove quality of life for every citizen in Bull County, and I'm not gonna reread that in its entirety, but would footnote that the EDP position is that they're the central coordinating entity responsible for ensuring everything effectively communicates and is coordinated. And this purpose that they have restated here was ratified again in July of twenty-one. The concerns they have, as well as all the partners that is in the organization, has expressed a concern for accountability of the staff to the board and the board partners, and making sure that the EDA has done well. They want to make sure, so there's, there's consideration of that, as we're talking about it now. And they want to know that there's a good faith effort by all partners to support the organization as a whole, as the EDP is that organization that's designed to be that central point for communication. So they're acknowledging two basic changes to the organization. One, they acknowledge that it needs to be a. One, they acknowledge that it needs to be a nimble, responsive decision-making and supervisory structure. So they acknowledge that the existing structure is probably too cumbersome, and they're, they're acknowledging that that needs to change probably, right? And that whatever organization emerges engages in a broad range of community members and resources necessary during a major, major recruitment, industrial recruitment. So you, you know, we, we can go through specific examples of communities. You don't, do not know exactly what resources you'll need. The one in Henderson, for example, involved everything from the schools, the high schools, the college, college, and the community college that, that's there, to existing industry, to the county, put in a road, to the city, develop water and gas. And so it's a very complex situation, and, and we just want to make sure that we have a, a, and a structure or an organization where all of that can be consolidated into one discussion. The page two of that document is what they, they say that any changes they make will be consistent with their bylaws, and that this is important tenant for them, is that they remain central and the coordinating organization. The public-private partnership is appropriate best practice organizational structure for the economic development efforts of the, of the community. This was supported by outside consultants and, as well as multiple discussions with many other communities. Therefore, they, in doing that, they must continue to receive funding for administration of the economic development program. And they believe that, that probably is still the best place to employ economic development staff. So that seems like a point of discussion. Keep, keep in mind, this was presented yesterday. So this really hasn't been reviewed by the EDA either. The EDA made their, their actual, the EDA sent out their letter on Tuesday, and this was heard on Wednesday. So this, these are merging at the same time, and, and so we'll go through this process of having conversation together, right? Possible changes that the EDP sees is change to the name of the organization. I think that's, that's going to be necessary to get community buy-in of, of, you know, the EDP in its current form has a negative connotation to it for different reasons. And, and so they do believe a, a name, it looks like, is appropriate. They do believe in reducing the size to allow the city and county a larger percentage of the board seats, which is consistent with what the recommendation of the, the EDA was. And so those two things align. Add the EDA as a partner of the organization, so this is alignment with what the EDA has said. Utilize an advisory council to maintain involvement in the broad range of operations. So this is also, and then form a personnel committee with clearly defined staff supervisory responsibilities and a multi-year funding commitment. So these last two are the ones that, that aren't as clear with the EDA, but the top four is consistent with what the EDA's recommendations are. So there's probably some, some debate with, within the EDP and the EDA of what that looks like. They're confirming that the role of the EDA is an important addition to the economic development toolbox for our community. It must be an integral part of our economic development efforts and should be incorporated into the organization. The role that EDA should be to acquire and develop property for industrial commercial use, which is consistent with its, part of its founding documents. And so those, that's kind of where the ED, Economic Development Organization kind of steering towards. So it's, it's right in the middle of, of a conversation between the EDA and now the EDP. And so we'll, we'll keep you abreast. Do y'all have any feedback? I know that's a lot of language, and y'all have not seen it. So certainly, if you have any comments, you, you're welcome to shoot them to me in an email or, or come in if you would like to place this on a commission meeting agenda to have further discussion after you have a chance to review both the EDA's slides and also the EDP's initial memo. You're welcome, we, we can do that at a forthcoming, either budget meeting or a commission meeting if you'd like to talk about that more.
Yeah, that's a lot to take in.
It is a lot to take in, and, and, you know, like I said, we got the ED, yesterday when, or Tuesday when I started this, I only had the EDA's. And then yesterday, we added the EDP's memo. So it's good that everybody, this is a good time as we're getting ready to start thinking about our budget. You're thinking about your community agency allocation. We, we have always looked at the EDP as we considered some of those conversations, although they're not a community agency, but they're a joint-funded operation of the city and county. So it's certainly something that, that we'll be thinking about during this budget cycle. So how much money do you invest in economic development? Where does that money lie? And so those are conversations you guys need to influence for us, for staff. And we'll certainly be happy to take that direction. Our recommendation is to, based on what we've seen in other communities, we do need to fully fund the three and a half people. And, and so if nothing else, we have, we, our recommendation would be that you commit to that. And I also recommend that you would commit to, in the budget process, funding that community liaison position, which would be, help staff, for example, with a newsletter and things like that. So we would add some of those burdens to that position. So we will, we will present that, that job description to you soon. And if you authorize that, then we can begin actually to work on that while we're working on the budget. And so knowing that we're not going to have that position hired until the budget's done anyway. So just something to think about. Now, I'm going to shut up for a second and let you all talk, if y'all have any input on any of those.
And Ashley, could I get a paper copy of this in my box? I like to take notes. Is the community liaison position one of the three and a half people?
No.
Is that separate? That's, okay.
No. No, so what we'd like to see, to describe that a little bit more, we believe that the change, for small, that's small business development. That is your small business.
Community liaison as small business development, only in the city.
To me, yes. It, it's focused on small business in the city. It's focused on the Chamber of Commerce director's relationship. You would, that, that employee of the city would be working mostly with your Chamber of Commerce. And, and we've always used, you know, there's a couple, there's an IT business here in town. We've always talked about that as a good example. You know, they have like six, six, seven employees. Why don't they have ten, right? So if you have ten businesses that, that we can facilitate or remove obstacles, maybe that's preventing them from growing like workforce. So if we can go to UK with them and recruit IT professionals into this region, then maybe they grow their staff by three or two. Well, when you do that ten times, you've suddenly got a nice increase to your job total, and then you start to see people moving here in, in small numbers. But it does pay off over ten years. You know, that's quite a bit of people. And even after five years, you know, that could be a hundred fifty, two hundred people. Well, you know, remember at the symposium, if you're landing a factory of two hundred people, once every five years, you'd take that, right? And so that's what we want to focus on with small business.
Has this been communicated with, to the chamber?
A little bit, a little bit on the side, but, you know, that's one of those just ongoing things that you, we do, right, like over time. We've talked about, in, in various meetings, we've, we've talked about that concept. But it's not a formal, we've not done that formally, but that's a goal of the city, right? It should be a goal of the city is to have those relationships.
What I hope doesn't happen, you know, there's a couple of things that maybe the two organizations have different views on, but I don't want them to get in a, you know, a gunfight on Main Street over that kind of stuff. We need to cooperate and go ahead. I mean, that's sort of been the issue up to this point is territorial, I guess, or egos involved or something, I, you know, I'm not, I don't want to go backwards anyway. But I hope we can just kind of come to a, a nice, easy compromise there and, and move ahead, you know, as, as we intend to. That's your job. Make sure that happens.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do the best we can with that. I appreciate that. The, you know, think about it, there's some of the questions that, that, you know, philosophically, there's some things that are probably in both kits of slides, the, the EDA presentation and the EDP organizational memo. You know, think about both of those philosophically, and, and we may talk about that again at the next commission meeting, just for a minute. And just try to identify things that, that you all feel are important for me to do, for me to follow up on with both those organizations. I want to make sure I'm responsive to that.
Well, two things. I still have concerns about communication across all of these boards. There still seem like a lot of different groups of people here. And the problem has been, those people haven't been talking to each other. Part of the problem. So I still have some concerns about people being in silos and working in silos. So I feel, I still feel like still too many separate boards. I don't really know what we do about that. But the communication gets lost. So I guess I would want to see some sort of communication plan, so to speak. You know, because EDP still needs to talk to the EDA and the city and the county. And if they have employees and they're on board, and the EDA has its own board and employees, then we're still all going to continue to step on each other.
Yeah, system-wide, I wouldn't recommend that you have two different factions of employees. With, that, you, you, you need one, one group of employees in your system. The, any, anything more than that is just not healthy.
And so when you talk about the three and a half people, who are, who do they work for?
Well, and that's the, that's the ques, the EDA, so ignoring what the EDA's pure recommendation is on the employees, the EDA recommended the employees be housed under them. The EDP recommended the employees housed under a new board. This EDA recommended board is consistent with some of the things identified by the EDP. So it's, if, if this could be approved, this board then covers that communication like you're talking about. The goal then is to have your, that went the wrong way. The goal would be to have your EDA chair on that, on that board, right? So anything that this board knows, theoretically, your EDA knows, right? So the structure of this board is designed to bridge the gap of communication between the city, the county, the EDA, the Industrial Foundation, and your advisory council representative. So then quarterly, when this advisory council meets, theoretically, everybody on this sheet gets a solid update. But you've got to keep in mind, too, some of these members are also on other boards, right? And, and so we've got to keep that in mind. One of the, one of the nuances is that jointly appointed boards, such as CBB or the, or, or, any, any jointly appointed board of the city and county can't represent the advisory council. So that you can't get on this board another, another public vote out here. The intention of this is to keep this away from these two agencies, right? So I think that's a good idea. But, but the whole purpose of this is to do, is to improve communication, like you're saying. Now, I agree with you on this, though. We, we have to be, whatever organization ends up, has to be very good with communicating to this group, because this is where your broad understanding of your initiatives occurs. But that day-to-day operation, that, you know, those monthly bills kind of thing are paid through this board. But now, like I said, the employees, who is, who goes in the executive session to evaluate your economic development director, right? Who does that? And the EDA is suggesting that, that they do it. But the EDP is suggesting that whatever board ends up, this, this ends up being, is the one to do it. And so that's something that we, we have to talk about as a community. We have to.
It seems a little redundant.
To, to me, that's the last major hurdle in, in achieving some form of, of agreement. When you look at even these possible changes that the EDP has started with, without even seeing what the EDA recommended, these top four generally are, were right there. The only variation is that the EDA is saying that they want to supervise the employees, recommend they supervise the employees. And then the EDP is saying, well, we want to, whatever board should probably have a personnel committee that, that clearly supervises staff. So they're, you know, that's the big, the biggest hurdle right now, is where that staff lands.
And I'll read that next paragraph there, role of EDA. That's the Economic Development Partnership trying to define the role of EDA. I don't know if we've defined the role of EDA ourselves yet.
Well, yeah, well.
We haven't defined it, but that says right there.
That's kind of our, that's our role, is to define.
I know, but I want to call to your attention what they're saying right there.
Yeah.
And I, and I think it's a very powerful statement, and it'll come up, it'll be a great discussion item. It's only along the lines of a great discussion.
It's too limited?
Oh, I don't know. See, I, because we have not defined what we think EDA should do. See, we, it says, acquire and develop property for industrial and commercial use. That's identifying our function as E, for EDA.
So.
That's, that's the EDP defining that.
Yes, ma'am. That's what I called to your attention.
Yes.
Right.
I see it.
The EDA, the formation of the EDA was a derivative from the EDP report that was done like in twenty, what, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen? That, which, which every year recommended that future land acquisition would ultimately involve public dollars. And so then in reaction to that, the city and county formed the EDA in order to facilitate using land as an incentive, investing public dollars in land. Theoretically, you're supposed to do the, an authority, industrial development authority. We've got an economic development authority in order to facilitate that type of public dollar investment. Well, okay, then, then what other, how, you know, those, those scopes of services for the EDA is, is being, is exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Atkins. And that's exactly the discussion the EDA is trying to have, too. And, and direction from you guys may help, you know, in, in terms of what you all view the EDA, what, what role, reconfirming what role you all believe the EDA has may be an important step for the EDA.
Yeah. That was my point.
Yeah.
Yeah. It just seems it could be awfully limiting, just that, so, okay.
Well, I don't believe our ordinance reads exactly like this, though.
It does, but it also says that you're, you're, you know, as part of doing land acquisition and land development, that it's necessary that it participates in economic activities, right? And that is included in the ordinance. It doesn't necessarily, the ordinance is extremely narrowly written, focused on the KRS that allows the industrial authority to exist, right? So it mirrors essentially what the state law says. The scope of that can be, can be expanded by the city commission and county through the bylaws. And, and keep in mind, you, you're going to have to look at your bylaws with the EDP. And so those two things should align, that the, the scope of services through the EDP and the scope of services through the EDA should align. And, and one agency or the other can't, it will be more difficult to facilitate economic development or, and business recruitment and retention if you have one of those groups diverging off into its own platform. So, you know, that, and that's not me acting like the city manager, that me, me, me telling you that as a consultant that, that has done that in different places. What I'm telling you is, is that ultimately, we have to, as one community, get to a point where we have one system for economic development. And so that all those things that are, we're investing, all the energy and man-hours we're investing in economic development aligns with itself. investing in economic development aligns with itself and provides opportunity, to the extent that it, its role does do that. I hope that makes sense.
Yes. I think it does. Okay, let's, other questions or comments about economic development? I guess that's a part of budget, but, okay.
It will be, because we're going to be, we're talking about funding.
Well, I think we need to have this, we need to further this discussion at some point. I don't know if it needs to be in the next budget discussion, or if we want to just put that on the agenda for another meeting.
Yeah, we can include it on your all's front burner, if you all want. Or you've got a couple of different approaches. The EDA has clearly made its recommendation outwardly in the slides. The EDP is considering those slides, the EDP has their own memo. So we can wait to see what the EDP's recommendation is from that, or continue to have you all foster or give us opinion on what you think the scope of the EDA should be, or whether or not you think either one of these tax are better, where the employees are housed. That's really, to me, the only big question left when I look at them. Is there's a disagreement with who's going to supervise? The thing, the difference is real subtle, but it, at the end of the day, if you put your employees here, they're supervised by four people from the government, right? And if you put it here, they're supervised by four people from the government, right? So it really, at the end of the day, I don't know what you're accomplishing by having the argument, because the city and county are responsible for the employees under any scenario at this point. And have, so one of the, reasonably, to be honest about the conversation, when you look at the makeup of those two boards, one of the public complaints has always been, the city and county have no control over EDP's staff. Under the board, either board, recommended by the EDA, the city and county has total control over the employees if they so exercise it. The reason why the complaints have always festered is the existing board, which is on the screen now, there is no clear majority of any group. So the county is sitting over here, the city's sitting over here, you have the Industrial Foundation, private sector, Perrville, Junction City mixed in, the BCIF has three votes out of 17. The reason employee management has been hard is not because there's disagreement between the city and the Industrial Foundation, or the city and county, or the city and your out, that, three, there's three at-large voters on your EDP, there's three industrial votes. There's no clear majority, no clear leadership of a board makeup like that. So the dysfunction that we're blaming on each other, if we're going to be honest about it, it's just because our board was not shaped to provide leadership. And we're sitting here looking at each other, mad at each other, as if each other, and this is me just being honest about it, I mean, and we're blaming each other sometimes when we go into these meetings, and it's not anybody's fault. It's just the fault of this vision of 17 members, and we're concerned because we don't have any trust. We're worried about this. So if we trust each other, then this board wouldn't look like that, right? It would look more nimble, it would look smaller.
Well, true.
And that's just being, I'm being honest about it.
Well, then the argument that I've always brought forth is accountability to the community and the taxpayer. There is none on the current.
There's none. The city and county, for all of its money it's investing, doesn't have a majority influence at all on this board.
No.
So how can you, you know, so the accusation, well, the city and county doesn't have control of its money, well, that's true. You know, it's just true. Well, at the same time, it's, there's, when you go to a meeting monthly of this group, it's very hard to get to clear direction, right? And so everything ends up being staff-led, a staff discussion with no feedback. You know, feedback's at 20,000 feet. Well, take that 20,000 feet, peel that out, do an advisory council, and then narrow your board in, and here, your city and county clearly has control, or here, your city and county clearly has control of the employees. So you can always get clear path forward of leadership theoretically, you know, assuming the city and county continues to work together on economic development. You have clear direction of staff in either one of those boards, which I think was critically important for the community. So we'll see what the EDP's reaction is.
Sounds good. And I guess, did the county get all this on Tuesday?
The county got the information from, keep in mind, the county is participating on the EDA also. And, you know, they have participation on there. So I don't know internally how they've communicated. But Dr. Roush communicated, who's the chair, the EDA's recommendation outwardly to the county judge, requesting that they communicate that amongst their folks. All the magistrates get it, you know, all their appropriate staff get it. Same time, we, the EDA communicated to the chair of the EDP with the same request. Communicate this to all your community partners, all the partners that are members of the EDP should now have the EDA's presentation, or should be getting it really soon. And then the EDP organizational framework will be talked about, the full EDP meeting on next Wednesday. So everybody that has a vested interest in economic development will have, should have both this slideshow and this memo in the next week at the latest, I would think.
Can we go back to talk about the community liaison for just a moment?
Sure.
So I thought that person wasn't going to focus on small business and things like that, but I thought that was a general communications position.
They would handle communications for the city, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. Any other comments? I'm trying to move this agenda. City codes and regulations.
All right, so once we get past that, I went the wrong way. So we were talking about this a little bit Monday, which is why we came out. When you're talking about a noise ordinance, yes, there is a nuisance ordinance where sound is addressed, but that doesn't address the idea of how a restaurant can use the sidewalk out in front of its building, whether or not it can have a sidewalk performer, right? There's different sections of various codes that address different things that we're trying to accomplish, right? And so what we would like to do is a, and keep in mind, we've heard for years, for the last five years consistently, that our codes are not modern, our codes are dated. And they are because, as evidenced by the language that, no amplified sound. Well, that language was written years ago, it's very consistent in different cities, and cities choose not to enforce it. Well, why not fix it, right? Our flat panel TVs that we have everywhere now, every restaurant you go to has a hundred. You know, when, you know, take BW, the Buffalo Out Wings and Rings on that bypass has TVs outside on the patio. Theoretically, that's not allowed, because that's amplified sound. Well, 25 years ago, you didn't see that as much, right? That was a rarity. Now, everybody does that. You know, you have outdoor music at Cheddar's, you have gas station TVs on your gas pumps. And so, let's modernize our ordinance. And in order to do that, you can't just delete the word amplified sound. You really need to do a little bit of a review of your, all of your documents to make sure that you don't have conflicts, that you're able to enforce what you're supposed to enforce, and you're not turning a blind eye to a section because you're trying to allow someone to have an outdoor performer. As we expand the sidewalk space on Main Street with the streetscape this summer, as that happens, you're inviting people into public space. You're inviting activity into public space. So therefore, our codes should consider that, right? If you're going to invest staff time, we should focus on our pieces of expertise, right? And so then, what we'd like to do is have outside counsel help us review those. Stephen Dexter is a great attorney, but doesn't necessarily think about all those intricate details. So you have to be a regulatory person in order to think about, oh, this will be affected somewhere else in your documents. And so that you don't just change X ordinance, you need to also think about your zoning ordinance in this issue, right? So all those things are integrated together. So what we're talking about is this screen. We want to, we want to address, we want a complete diagnostic review of our city codes to improve livability, meaning we don't have something that artificially restricts what people do as part of their daily habits now, which is like, for example, outdoor TVs. We want to consider the economic development impacts of the noise, the EDC, that needs to continually be refined. And then we need to modernize our codes. A lot of our codes were written in the 80s and 90s, and it's just time to consider different language and to do those things. Staff doesn't need to be inventing language to accommodate something whenever it's already been legally tested somewhere else. So what we'd like to do is get expertise in that language and really address our documents with that in mind. Zoning codes are a part of that. And what we'd like to do is make sure that our sign ordinance reflects. So what was interesting to me, when you look, there's communities around us that have more restrictive sign ordinances than ours, and ours is, we consistently hear things like, well, your sign ordinance is bad. Well, maybe it is, I don't know, but I know there's other communities that don't complain about it, and they have more restrictions than we do, significantly more restrictions. So what, where's the disconnect on that? And so let's see if it's just a simple language thing, the downtown historic preservation, we saw this week where that interpretation had to be reconsidered on a simple sign. So let's look at our downtown signs, let's make sure they're modern, they accommodate new development, modern development, modern growth, and so that the zoning codes and your city codes facilitate desired outcomes. And I think that's an important statement. So that the vision that everyone has is permitted with our documents, right? And so a beginning point of that is to do, look at our comp plan to make sure it matches our existing zoning ordinance, unless, if there's any intermediate repairs to the zoning ordinance until we get a new comp plan, until Steve Hunter can then consider that against the subregs and that new comp plan against the zoning ordinance and things like that, so that we can really think about replacing that in whole if it's needed, or leave it alone if it's needed. It's totally up to a future discussion, but let's, we can make some intermediate repairs to try to prevent conflict that we've seen. And so we'll go through that process. Hope that makes sense, a little bit more than just a noise ordinance. It's more complex than that.
Would be a shame to spend all the money on the streetscape and then, you know.
Have six months or a year of conflict because our ordinance is say X, right? Or Y, you know? It's just unnecessary. Let's get in front of it. We've been talking about it for years. As staff, as we've gotten some projects out of the way, as we've gotten some administrative tasks that where we've, now we have a finance director, thankfully, leaves here and was willing to join us. And as we go through that process of looking at our financial software and those various things, once, as we get those things out of the way, the natural thing that we need to make sure is that also our ordinances are modern. If we're going to modernize our software, then we should also modernize our ordinances and whatnot.
Yeah, and I guess, my biggest question is, why have the ordinances gotten so outdated? Like, when we realize there's a problem, why has that not been addressed along the way?
Because it's not easy to fix. It just never is. Which is why we want to be more, we want to be intentional and do it fully. It's just, it goes back to what I said, yes, there's a single point where it talks about noise, but noise is covered in special permits, it's covered in your alcohol ordinance, it's covered in, you know, there's just so, it's not easy for staff just to come up, and Bridget is as skilled as anybody with just looking at an ordinance and looking at text. But the problem is, it's not easy to fix it. So we want to be, we want to provide the administrative support to codes, to ourselves, to do that, to actually do it.
And so, moving forward, once we do this, how do we maintain that? Because I don't want to, you know, I don't want to be here, you know, the 80s was 40 years ago.
I know that, I agree with you 100%. And that's a reason you want to do.
Especially we do not want to admit that it is.
Well, and that's why you want to have a thorough review, but the reality is, is that you do fix your ordinances piecemeal. Now, that is seen as a bad practice, but the reality is, when somebody comes in with a great idea, and we want amplified sound, we see that word, and so then you try to address that as an individual issue. That's just the nature of the beast. But from time to time, we do need to go do a complete review. And that's just not been done in a long time. We've picked apart pieces, and most folks don't understand, for example, your utility ordinance. Do you realize that you're not really, under your ordinance, you're restricting yourselves to not expanding sewer services into any area of the community? It's developer, it's a developer expense. Well, maybe you want to rethink that language and see if there's a special assessment that you can do from now on. You know, those things are, you want to think about from time to time, and it's okay that it's old, because they are, they should be hard to change, right? You shouldn't change them willy-nilly, you shouldn't change them every year, right? You want them to, you want to do a good job, stand the test of time, and once every five or 10 years, evaluate thoroughly to make sure your city's ordinances align with your city, your community ideology with how you use your environment, if that makes sense.
So is that just something that, we just haven't really had a specific person to do that?
Yeah, and it's just not something you do every day. And it's just, bottom line, it's that. I mean, things are piecemeal adjusted, and that's normal. But that's not always good. You know, that's just how it works. And so we want to do a good job with it, we want to make sure, just like our personnel policies, so staff and our management team, we're looking at our personnel policies, and we're going through one section at a time, and we're trying to modernize some language. Why in the world did we do this? Why was this written in our personnel policies? Well, we don't even know. You know, so we want to propose to strike that in the future and do it differently. Well, and same thing with your codes, let's just make sure that the statement of the rules in the city that guide our community should facilitate desired outcomes. And we should not artificially restrict ourselves, or choose not to enforce something because we didn't want to change it.
Or try to enforce something that is not even obtainable.
Or not, exactly.
Which is where we are.
I totally agree, that's well put.
It's not even obtainable.
Not even obtainable. So going past that, this is what's going to be going on in the background this, over the next few weeks and months, probably takes 90 days to go all the way through it. We'd like to get some outcome in 60, but we will be working on that with staff. The next thing is, is staff is focusing on just completing existing work. We have a lot of projects underway, we have utility projects that's consuming. You can see the activity on the agenda packet of the utilities and see the activity of public services and all the different departments. There's a lot of projects underway, there's a lot of initiatives underway, and we, that is a budget priority for staff. The capital program we talked about last year was really a two-year cycle where we knew that you're going to spend a lot of time planning, and then the next year, building. And so we're kind of right in the middle of that. So there's not a lot of new capital that staff would propose this year in terms of project-wise. The wastewater plant's under construction, for example, and it's going to be under construction till spring of next year, right? So there's not a lot you're going to do there, as an easy thing to point to. Economic development, and so as I go through these, these are things I'm challenging, I'm just throwing out there for you all, please give us direction, right? If you have a comment, take a minute and tell us what those comments are. I'm trying to trigger your thoughts so that we can receive input, okay? Economic development, of course, the structure, we got staff to figure out, we want to progress. We're still working on incentives, we know that we are evaluating a possible TIF downtown. We have an evaluation that's happening for an industrial revenue. We have an evaluation that's happening for an industrial revenue bond, possibly on the bypass, which is a little bit different than a TIF. And of course, we know we want to, as the fire station is completed, as we move forward with the downtown master plan, after that, we want this downtown development fund to promote downtown housing, for example. That was recommendation out of the downtown master plan. And then also, just simple residential incentives. Do we do those? What do those look like? Of course, the downtown master plan, it is an ongoing effort. We do think about that regularly. The biggest linchpin will be the schedule for the vacancy of the fire station, and so that we want to be in a position to begin activities as that building becomes vacant, right? Streets and roads, we have a bunch of road projects where we have been dealing with for a while. Streetscape's going to be under construction this summer. The East Connector, we're still advocating for funding for that. The airport expansion, we just talked about the access road. But if the airport really grows, the airport layout plan indicates that airport road could be affected. So how do we, as a city, impact or speed up the relocation of that to facilitate airport expansion? We've talked about that, and we'll continue to do that. We have the East-West Connector, which is the North Stewart's Lane extension that we mentioned before that provides access in the North Fork Southern. That ultimately will need an enhanced or a design. It will also need funding. Minor projects would include the Church Street Extension, consistent with the downtown master plan. So we've got a property request for land to do that extension on. We're actively talking about that with landowners. And also, for example, out on the bypass, we know that we still got to deal with the Starbucks intersection. Josh has been working on that and has done a good job with a couple of different concepts. And I think he's got to continue to work with the state, which is important to us, better relationship with KYTC, in order to come up with the most effective solution, which, keep in mind, things like that are never fixed. They are managed, and they may change again in the future as development changes. We want to improve maintenance. Rick has done a terrific job organizing the work. Staff is doing a great job with being responsive to complaints and responsive to needs. They're being proactive, seeking issues, and I give Rick a lot of credit for that and Josh. With roadways, we want to make sure that we have improved policies and management of our right-of-way. So for example, we're working on a new right-of-way ordinance, which will, utilities, for example, have a lot of freedom to operate inside of the city right-of-way. Well, we want them to ask permission so that citizens, when they call City Hall and say, well, why is there an orange flag in my yard? Well, we want to know that. We want to be able to communicate that effectively, that, oh, it's AT&amp;T putting fiber in your subdivision, or it's whatever that general initiative is by those utility companies, for example, or someone with a simple driveway cut, that we want to make sure that that's considered for traffic so that we don't create a hazard with how we locate an entrance and things like that. We need to improve our service there. Parks and Recreation, we're implementing this new master plan, this new series of projects. We're working on that. We're improving operations and maintenance of our facilities. I know that staff has got their feet underneath them. They've been there about a year now, and we want to put pressure on them to now reassess how they do things, look for improvement, look for opportunity. We've called it sleep and creep, and then next year, we want them to leap. And this year, really, the creep year, they need to do a good job. We really need to be almost leaping now. And I know that during staff meetings, Parks and Rec is thinking about their fields, they're talking about improving fields that have not been, had any maintenance on them in a number of years, the, from the turf quality to the landscaping around the facilities that we have. And of course, we're talking about expanding the facilities, and I know everybody's looking forward to that.
Can I just interrupt you for a moment?
Yep.
I know everyone's looking forward to that, but I've had a lot of complaints coming out of Bundy Davis Center. We need to make sure that we are maintaining what we have until we get to where we are going. Like I said, I've had a lot of complaints coming from there.
I hear it 110%. Well, that's something we will address. Cemetery, we're working on a cemetery. Preservation, sustainability, planning is underway. The fall 2020 was a typo. We're working on the pavilions, Josh, that should say fall 2022. We're working on the pavilions. Josh is actively doing all those. And so we are, we focus on our cemeteries, even though we don't talk about it all of the time. We want that to be a terrific service. We have Cemetery Sexton that's focused on maintenance, focused on aesthetics, as well as the aesthetics within the community. We want to update our beautification program. We want a functional beautification committee that is, we've had just general turnover in that committee over the last five years or so, and we want to make sure that committee is active and giving staff good direction and providing good feedback so that the community, the livability and the aesthetics of the community is high. Some of the things we've talked about with staff is the welcome to Dambel signs. They've not been changed since. You know, really, they were put in. And so what we've asked them to do is, it's time to spruce things up a little bit. And I know that they've been really good this winter of trying to get the vegetation ready and do maintenance on that, but the signs are old and dated. And so what we've asked staff to do is come up with a new sign that's consistent with our wayfinding plan to just see if those two things can align with each other so that we get different signs there. All communities now do signs, welcome to the community signs. And so we want ours to be at the fore knot. They were at the forefront when they were put in. Now, everybody else has caught us, and there's been a few past us. And so what we want to make sure is our welcome to Dambel signs are cool and modern-looking and inviting. Tree planting, we want to continue that effort. Litter control, we have a lot of litter on the bypass in different spots, hotspots. We've talked to North Point. We will continue to work with our local jail, trying to find support labor to do litter pickup. We want to focus on our litter program. We still want to deal with condemned property differently. We are going to come back to that. We have, Josh has came up with some ideas too. I know Bridget is focused on that. You end up with property with significant liens on them that are half the value of the property. We've got, some of those properties, we need to probably commit to acquiring and turning back into the private sector, trying to cause them to flip. And so we've got to figure out that solution. We can't just keep mowing absentee landlords or mowing property that's not maintained and building liens. You know, we had, I think, staff has came up with a list of seven properties, and I think all of them are $20,000 level of liens on them.
Or find a way to allow that property owner to sell the property, whether it's, you know, some sort of settlement or forgiving liens or something.
Something, yeah.
Something is better than these properties continuing to sit there.
Yeah, totally agree, and that is something that we're actively talking about as staff, and we'll continue to do that, and hopefully, we can be productive in the future on that. Administration of the city overall, we have addressed staffing. We believe that with using Randy, we have gotten both our morale and our policies and our compensation and our organization of our benefits and our responsiveness to the employee, we have improved as an employer, right? And we believe we are approaching more of that employer of choice. We're definitely preferred to some of the other cities that some of our staff is coming from, and we're excited about that. We give Randy a lot of credit for that, but we give this commission a lot of credit for endorsing the compensation study and endorsing some of those things because that does make a difference in our employees' lives and creates a more positive overall environment for us. And so that is appreciated, I think, throughout the system, and we will continue to try to address a positive environment. We want to have a healthy work environment. We don't want unhealthy behavior in our work environment. We want to continue to make that a point of emphasis in this building, and so then outwardly throughout the various buildings and throughout the various departments of the city. We are reviewing our operational, we want to review our operational policies with each one of the departments this year. We'd like to do that. That will be an administrative goal of mine. Won't swear that I'll get to it, but that will be something, we'll at least get to a few. We are looking at our personnel policies. We anticipate making a recommendation for changes there. For example, how do you structure your vacation? It's not as simple as just giving time off. It's a matter of how do you structure that to keep people here? You know, do we wait 20 years before we give somebody an extra week? Well, what if you give them that extra week at year 15, whenever it's, they're getting into that workload and it's a heavier workload? Or what about giving more time to a young employee as their kids are being born or when they're younger and they can travel before they have kids? It could be an advantage, and you're going to be more likely to keep someone if they have more time off early. As you get later in your career, we all know, we don't take time off as much anyway, right? So it's, we want to look at everything we do as a benefit and structure it to the benefit of our intended recipient.
And you know, in the corporate world, which we should be considered corporate world, but we're not, you know, that's negotiating time off and those types of things are negotiated at hiring, and it's kind of like a package that is offered. It's not just your salary and these are your hours. It's a total package of total compensation, so to speak. So along with our benefits that we offer, we also need to be able to offer what their downtime really is.
Yeah, I don't know that you can actually do that under municipal law in the same way that you can in the corporate world sometimes, but to your point, we need
Just similar.
We need to use benefits as to our advantage. I totally agree with that. Financial software, Lee's evaluating that. We're going to be really hard and heavy on replacing our financial software. It's time. We've been waiting on the finance director to get here to help, and unfortunately for her, she's getting to.
I actually, I did a demo yesterday. I hadn't had a chance to tell you about that with
Good, go ahead, feel free.
With Cassell, since we have already funded, put some money toward it. I will say, they are significantly better than what we currently have, but frankly, that's not hard to beat. But my understanding from them is that they focus significantly on the utility operation side, and based on my discussions with utility, they are really looking in a different direction. So I don't know that they are the best option to, for finance. I have a couple other demos scheduled next week, but I think we should probably consider doing an RFP in the very near future, so.
Thanks for that, and that's terrific. And so just know staff is working on that, and we want to make our budget in real time. We'd love almost to be able to see, you know, that daily update almost. If we have good software, we can do things like that. And so we're excited about doing that because it makes, you know, I think, Lee and I do agree, we both love technology and love charts and love.
Absolutely. And some of the things that are available out there, they do that. Like, I would be able to assign each department head, you know, they would have modules that they could view in real time, like updated, you know, this is your department's budget. You could, there's a few that would be able to. You can submit your budgets through the same process. You would be able to do all electronic POs in your invoicing and things like that would be all accessible. You could drill down and view your, like, if Ashley paid for something in her department, she could view down into the actual invoice that was paid. Those are some of the capabilities that are currently out there that a lot of people do use, and that's ideally what I would like to reach for.
Yeah, we're excited about that personally. Five minutes?
So we would need that in our budget coming up?
Yes, yeah. That's exactly what, so when we're building the budget, you'll start to, we'll talk about how much we're investing in X and Y, and that'd make sense to you because this is part of that conversation.
Sounds like it's well needed.
Please bring us into the 21st century.
That's what we're getting at.
I know.
On every level.
When you're working on the spreadsheet, it's hard. It's hard. And I know that sometimes y'all see a bunch of numbers, but I'm not joking, it can be very time-consuming to get there. Yeah, let's take five minutes if y'all want to.
Okay.
Talking about two is staff time. And so, there's an expense. When we're looking at our budget, there's an expense to man-hours for us that not every project is a line item with, you know, $500,000 in it. A lot of it is man-hours of staff. That's part of your operational budget, right? So, keep that in the back of your mind so that when we're talking about things like improved garbage service, that's staff time. That's an investment. And every time we focus on something for a few minutes, that's an expense. And it's an expense where it's an opportunity cost, where we're spending time on something and not doing something else, right? So, as we jump up with the idea of we want to, I don't know, focus on the streetscape for a few minutes, and that's time Josh is not spending looking at the welcome to dam signs, right? So, you always have to measure it like that. We only have so many of those a year in terms of hours. And so, that does restrict us on what we do. But, and then two, something else I'd like, I'm still trying to figure out is the whole city manager report thing is good because we, you know, we need to have that opportunity or that requirement to communicate outwardly. But what I'd like to do is rather than just make it about the top five things that I need to make sure I mention to you, I'd like to have some sort of functional, and what you call it's a dashboard, so that you all can track what we're doing and so that it's consistent every month. And so that when you see us not talk about something, you remember to ask us also because we know we all get busy and we all have to... So, we're thinking about those things. I just don't know what they look like, don't know what they are. But we're going to figure something out so that it's a good, healthy, not just this 1980s model of a memo with 10 things typed on it, right? Because it's just not, we can do better than that. And we're trying to conceive of that opportunity. And so, getting back onto this financial software, citizens awareness, that goes right back into citizens awareness. If we have a dashboard, we could put it on our website. We can communicate it outwardly. We want to, the better informed the community is, the easier things are to do, to get done. Even if we need an easement from someone, if they understand the context of the project before we ever knock on their door, can we communicate that good? I don't know if we can, but that does help. It's paying dividends on utility work now where we've talked about things enough, where we've knocked on at least a couple doors, where folks are aware that we were coming, known for a long time, and we are approaching successful negotiation of a couple complicated easements. And hopefully, those will be on the next agenda and you'll see those and you'll understand why they're complicated.
I think communications made more difficult and also more important because of the newspaper situation. I mean, they used to not get everything quite correct, in my opinion, but they did do a good job of informing people, at least introducing the topic. I think we got to sort of fill in somehow that gap.
Josh looked at the paper the other day and out of the whole, what was it, like eight pages? There was what, three, maybe two to three articles actually written by a local person about truly the local community. Everything else was AP or done somewhere else. And so, yeah, it was an interesting observation, but it just highlighted for us the fact that we've got to figure out this communication thing permanently, or at least, you know, permanently for our cycle of existence. We're dealing with the garbage. The garbage is a mess, no pun intended. It's, you know, we do have can issues where cans are laying in the road, cans are spilled, garbage goes down the street, cans are busted, you know...
Streets are missed.
They're just not picked up.
I've given them that call.
Yeah. And, you know, some of the citizens that have had conflicts, we've actually invited a couple of them in to look at our contract with us. And, you know, you come up with a good idea and we'll try to figure it out with you. And we've, you know, I don't know what the solution is long-term. Economy is really, there's been a consolidation in the garbage industry like everything else that has hurt services inside of communities. Used to, the company doing your garbage service was a local community, was locally. The director was here, lived over on whatever street and, you know, would show up at meetings from time to time. And you don't have that now. You have a corporate agency that owns multiple sub-entities. And, you know, leadership is not in your community. And it is a challenge to administer. What we've asked in the county, I don't know really what role they can play or what role they want to have. You're required to have a solid waste coordinator in your county. So, what we'd like to do is have dialogue with the county over time. The city and county should be partners in that position. We probably was, I concede that it was probably a little offensive before when we withdrew our support of that position. We've got to come back to that where we are offering help. And then, we will continue to try to figure that out as time passes. How to improve that contract, whether we replace that contract with something different, whether we, you know, we've had brainstorms about what if it was done in-house again? We still got the tipping fees at the landfill. Well, how do you account for that? And because then they're in control of that cost now because that same company controls all the landfills in the region, right? So, it's a, garbage is a problem to achieve the level of service that the average person expects, right?
I was actually going to ask what the cost would be if we did bring it back in-house.
I don't know that you can afford it. Maybe you can work out something with the county. And so, that's one of the conversations, like everything else, that we need to sit down and make sure we have that conversation, even if it's a no, right?
Is this something that we negotiate completely separately from the county waste management?
We have our own contract inside of the city. They have their own methodology in the county. I don't know exactly what, if any, contracts they have. But, you know, we need to sit down with the solid waste coordinator and to see if there's something we can do systematically to make it better.
And it's about, you know, what it comes down to is what people see is the curbside service. That's what they see. That is what they're paying for.
Correct.
That is where we have the problem.
Yep. Totally agree.
So, yeah, that's really important. Unfortunately, my husband is one of those people who has called and talked to them quite frequently.
The reason we restructured the contract the way we did, and so now, to help the vendor understand their cost to operate inside of your community, they have to understand how much garbage is being produced, what the tipping fees are going to be, how many cans they're going to have. And so, really what we wanted to do in order to make the cost as direct to the participant as possible, not everybody pay more because it's unknown. We tried to provide as much clarity as we could so that then the vendor can know that everybody has one can. And then, so that's the minimum level so they can easily attach a cost to that. And so then, if you want another can, they know how much tonnage is in that can on an annual basis, maximum capacity. So, they'll assume some percentage of that and they'll know that's how much tipping fees they have. And they know that, so it's easy, so the idea of having a unit price per can above your minimum service is a little bit utility-based. It mirrors your utility service a little bit, but it makes it a known cost. So, ultimately, that contract is less, right? You know, we tried that, but that doesn't account for just the general care as you do your job, right? And so, we've got to figure that out. And we, as staff, all of us freely acknowledge that. And so, we're trying to figure it out. We're trying to look at it.
I mean, I've seen with my own eyes a competitor...
See what?
A competitor, get the driver, get out of their truck and set the can back up or get out and pick up spillage that may be going on. So, you know, I mean, I think people don't mind to pay for it, but they want the service that they're paying for.
Yeah, totally agree.
And we also need to remember now that 10 or 15, 20 years ago, those of us who are young enough to remember, you know, we've made a lot of progress, not perfect, but don't forget about the progress that we've made.
Well, yeah, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, they were city employees, you know? So, it's changed a lot. You had the first iteration of that and then the market changed. You had a consolidation in the industry of service areas. It's not a monopoly, but it starts to approach it where you only have a couple companies that really are effectively able to do it because of the landfill costs. And so, we've, you know, we're having to adapt to the changing market also as a service provider in that we did provide it directly, then we outsourced it. Municipal utility is, we give Marshall a lot of credit. He's able to touch a lot of different bases and they've done a good job with that. He's working, and their staff is working with Lee on trying to modernize the financial side for us. We want to get to a point where we have an online account system. We've gone to monthly billing. We're doing, contacting those on a cutoff list. We're having cutoff lists. Instead of having 200 on a cutoff list, we're getting it down to 60 and 70. That's helpful. The post office still impacts our ability to get bills out. So, what we'd like to do is have a platform where we could even get to e-statements so it's easier there. I think that we're moving in that direction. So, everything we can do to make our utility function less like an old water utility like all the other cities do, we need to do, and that's what we're working on. Capital development, there's a lot of capital ongoing and will be ongoing for the next 24 months on the utility side. Perivale Road Water System improvements, the water tower is done, but we're waiting on to really, the pump station to, before we can really activate water supply in that end fully. Supply chain issues have impacted that schedule, but it's happening. And then, we've got to continue that project on towards Springfield. Ultimately, remember Springfield's got to go in on the west side of Perivale to connect. And so, easements are necessary and all those are occurring and time is passing while all that work is happening. So, it's necessary that we'll talk about it again in the future, but understand that that's a significant monumental effort to connect two counties ultimately together. And it's a terrific project and a terrific thing for our region.
How far away are we from having the new water tower operation?
I'd have to ask Marshall.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we should do a ribbon cutting on that, too.
Yeah. Yeah, we did talk about that. The wastewater plant, phase one is...
Hey, I'd climb that thing. I'd climb it in a heartbeat.
The wastewater plant is a point of emphasis for Marshall. Phase one is underway. That's a significant expansion. Phase two is a capacity upgrade after phase one gets done. Phase one will be done spring of '23. And then, we'll see what phase two, the timing of phase two looks like by then. So, expect that conversation to happen more. And you have a lot of center sewer system projects. We've got Spears Creek that's got to go to the market. The pump station in Forest Main, Forest Main's 40 years old. It's a ductile iron system that there's parts of it that will need to be upgraded, both for capacity and also reliability. You've got Nobley in Junction City is the next major pump station. Center sewer overflow program project that needs to occur. It's got its own watershed on the west side of Perivale and then of cour, Junction City. And then, of course, we've got Perivale issues with the wastewater plant. We have corrective action plan there that is dictating a schedule of renovation. And then, with that, you'll have some collection issues that you'll have to manage to make sure the collection system matches the capacity of the sewer system or the sewer plant. A lot of those are funded with the ARPA money that was received. We're asking the county, which we've received positive feedback so far that that's going to happen as we transition from last year's work into this year's work. Those projects will start to show up on your radar in budget meeting, or not in budget meetings, but in commission meetings where things are approved and whatnot. So, then, that's a pretty big discussion. That's two hours' worth. We've got thumbprints at 11:30, I think. And so, what we want to do is get to here with a few minutes to spare, 15, 20 minutes of, what are we forgetting that you all want to do? We want to ask you those questions and just take notes and have just open dialogue, brainstorming session with you guys if y'all want to do that. If not, I don't really have anything else to talk about today. What do you all want to do?
I'd like to throw out a couple of things here just to contemplate. On the master plan and when we start to develop specifically the corner here... On the master plan and when we start to develop specifically the corner here, is the plan to get a, I believe it's called a master developer or master planner to then oversee the development?
You won't do that necessarily. You will do an RFP for different pieces of it. Those pieces, once distributed, they will do their own project. It won't be the city necessarily. There will be pieces that the city does do directly potentially if a public parking garage is built, for example, instead of something, you know, that could be a public project. But what we would see is as that corner consolidates under one deed, say it like that, one owner, you would like to have a developed master plan of that a little bit. So you're going to have a little bit of planning that you'll put in before you do any RFPs to make sure that you are, your space is correct for what you're proposing or what the developers would propose, but you're not having a master coordinator of that. That is, you were doing that through your RFP process.
Okay. I'm just, I'm concerned about the bandwidth of our staff taking that on as well as everything else.
Yeah, now, once you do, once you do an RFP, that's off of, that starts to be what you would consider off of staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure of that. I know we've talked about considering grant writer position. I just would like to possibly see some numbers on that if possible.
Okay.
And then social worker to work with police. And I know some other cities have used that same person to work with codes on, so if they have a residence that has had repetitive, repetitive, repetitive calls or, you know, domestic problems, you know, trash or whatever. So that person also, specifically in Erlanger, they've used that person to work with codes and police. And I'm wondering, just totally throwing noodles at the wall here, if that person could help with counseling officers, firefighter, dispatch through trauma and through those traumatic calls as well. So that's just a big idea that I had.
No, we've looked at that one time before. We, when I say look at it, we were made aware of cities considering that. We've not really done a full evaluation of the opportunity of it and something that we should consider and something we should look at, yeah.
Yeah, Erlanger I know has deployed that. They only have one and pretty much that person's hung call 24/7, which is not very efficient. But they would like to employ more, but that person is considered a second responder, which means, you know, they are at the request of the officers when they get on scene. But they're the ones that are also working with codes for, and, you know, I guess you get into maybe protective services, child protective services, that type of thing with that.
Yeah, we don't have that in-house. The state does a good job with providing a lot of those services. So when we, when it gets to a scene where there's an issue, we call the state in to, through the state agencies to handle a lot of that and I think that's the legal process that's required. So there's a limit to what a counselor can do and, which is what I kind of think that, you know, we have to tailor it to allow for that, the appropriate agency to have ownership of the appropriate responsibility. We don't want to incidentally redirect or make an effort to redirect responsibility where it shouldn't be, where there's no system to support it. But at the same time, there probably is some opportunity at times to have a counselor engaged because we do have, you know, a lot of officers that are involved on a domestic scene sometimes, but, so I don't know. Chief, do you have anything you want to talk about that?
And that's just a total, that counseling part of it is completely me, just throwing out suggestions.
Well, actually, Oklahoma has a, they've started a program, they call it cahoots, and I forgot what that stands for. And I actually talked to Kathy Miles about it last year. I am aware of what they are doing up there in Erlanger. I don't know if it would work here because of the way our family court works here. They have some things just a little different with their court system in Northern Kentucky that, and we are probably one of the most, in my opinion, underrepresented as far as judges. You know, we just have one circuit judge, one family court and one district court judge. And that is probably the biggest problem here with that issue. But we have worked with Kathy Miles, talked about some of those other issues as far as having a therapist for law enforcement or emergency responders and things like that. But when you get into the juvenile system here, that's definitely totally different here.
I think, you know, I think it's just something to consider if nothing yet, you know, even if we can't do it with the, because of the court system. I think having someone there almost immediately for our first responders is a good thing and to help them maybe work through a situation. They don't necessarily have to be on scene, but if that, you know, if those officers or firefighters or, you know, even dispatch have a traumatic call, to have someone that they can come back and immediately talk to.
That is very difficult in just this community. We, I mean, when I say we've looked at that extensively, you know, we've had some very tragic incidents.
Right.
With kids and some other things. And we've gone out and looked for people that deal with those type of things with emergency responders and that's very hard to find. Like I said, we use Kathy to just try to put us in the right situation. Kentucky now has something they call PCIS. They do through Richmond, through the academy, and probably that's been the best resource that we found that we could get somebody into. Getting somebody on staff, again, you know, you're talking about probably some significant dollars to get them from somewhere else, people that have that kind of training, you know? It's not just a normal therapist that has some of that.
It's, this is a good discussion. And being that we have 11:30 appointment, I hate to do this, but Kevin, if you and Jenny and I have other things to suggest to staff, I suggest we do it at a later date. The chair would like to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, staff, for your presentations this morning.